My 360. It's free.
Yeah, for the driving stuff.
And then you can set, I think the three one month. Set three locations.
Free for free. So I, I reached my home school and then I, I was adding.
Yeah, so I have, so I have like, I have my parents', 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 our house. Like I put actually different spots down there. Yeah. So then like it tells you when they arrive. And when they do. It's all 20 to 20 driving by. Lincoln, Lincoln, like 30 seconds later, you know, because you're in the vicinity, but yeah.
I had to turn the locations off.
But I like it.
Last summer was the first time we tried and he wasn't driving yet. I remember the first time. Some places it's, it's a little. But I guess, I don't know, it's still really nice to be up the day from the middle. You know, it's just. Yeah. Maybe I have any issues.
Well, it does tell you. I'm having to. I guess. I don't know. If you, you know, like even if it's outside 23, it's just going to pass. You know, so I'm sure it is the deal, you know, if you're going to two guys. She never. She doesn't have. Someone. Take it out there and test drive. That's why we're looking for judges, so some people don't know just. We can come on. We can test drive something and get the 20 dollars. Yeah. Can all three of you test drive? Go in separate times.
Yeah.
Why?
Hey.
We just have to all go in separately.
Do you have a timer? Oh, really? Oh, that's great. Good.
It was great. Yeah, it was a really well done show.
We understand. They appreciate that, thank you.
Sorry.
It's always amazing to see what they can.
Hi, good, how are you?
Are you staying out of the trailer?
Fine, dude.
Yeah.
All succeed.
Just keep your nose in those big.
Right.
Call the meeting director. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the approval of minutes for the meeting held August 12th, 2019. Do you have a motion to approve?
Removed. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes held August 12th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. We, we do not have any persons wishing to address the board this evening. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Removed.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Now the good news report. Deanne, thank you.
Good evening. Now that school is once again in session, it seems like summer and all of the fun things that happened then are just a distant memory, but we didn't want too much time to go by without recognizing four students who spent the beginning of their summer at National History Day at a competition in College Park, Maryland, along with 3,000 other students from around the world who came to showcase their hard work in the National History Day competition. We have Jack, Craig, and Joseph Simpson. And I'm gonna have them stand first and have them come to the podium. They are students, previous students of Edison. Jack is now a Lincoln student and Joseph is over at Roosevelt. They were awarded the Junior Outstanding Affiliate Award for South Dakota. Their junior group exhibit was titled Mary Ellen Wilson, How One Child's Tragic Abuse Ignited The Era of Child Protection Laws in America. So these gentlemen are gonna come up and tell you a little bit about their project. We have a couple of photos on the screen to share with you as well. And it is worth noting, as one of their mothers told me, that these are graduates of our Challenge Center and our Middle School Honors Program as well. So perhaps we'll see more of these gentlemen in the future. So first of all, we'll invite Jack and Joseph and then we'll meet Ben after that.
Hi, I'm Jack and I would just like to say that spending the first part of their summer in NHG was just really great and amazing experience. Our project, just a quick summary of it, was about this little girl, Mary Ellen Wilson. She was living in a time before child protection laws existed, so parents could beat their children within the law. And she was horribly abused by her foster mother, like so badly, in fact, that she wasn't even allowed to walk outside. So basically, Methodist missionaries from the church came and tried to help her and they fought and fought against the law until finally they prevailed and laws were eventually created throughout history that allowed children to be protected from abusive parents.
Yeah, and our experience at National History Day, basic, so it was, it was very good there. And so what we did is like, we went up in a, in front of a group of three judges. Basically, we explained our board and then what happened is we, as she said, we got best in South Dakota and then we also got, is somewhere between 11th and 20th place for our age group in the nation on our project.
Awesome. How did you decide on your topic?
Um, well, when we did this project in sixth grade, we did it on like child labor laws. And we thought that was real interesting because all child protection laws directly impact us. So like we thought that it'd be really fun to expand on that and realize how the era of child protection actually started.
Thank you.
And I'd say you got 11.
Yeah. For sure. So the, another group attended the same. Ben Qualley and Ella Ratliff, also Edison Middle School students, were awarded the Captain Ken Kosky Naval History Prize Award for their junior group website titled The Art of Confusion, The Triumph of Dazzle Camouflage After Tragedy. Ella is not able to join us, but Ben is here with us as well. And he too is attending Lincoln this year. So we'll invite Ben to come forward and share with us about his project.
Hi, I'm Ben. So the project that Ella and I made was about dazzle camouflage, which was a type of ship camouflage that was used in World War I and a little bit in World War II to throw off the accuracy of U-boats, that there's a picture of it on the screen now, that you might be thinking, how does that work as camouflage? It's really obvious. That the way it worked was with U-boats, that they were sinking tons of ships during World War I. The way they worked was you quick looked through a periscope and saw a ship and it was moving in some direction at some speed and you had to figure out how fast it was moving to line up the shot so it would hit the ship. Because the torpedo would move pretty slowly. So what dazzle camouflage did is it made it incredibly difficult to tell what direction the ship was headed in or what speed it was headed in because of all of the crazy colors and lines that part of it could have been the front of the ship, but you couldn't really tell because of all of the lines. And at NHD, we won the Captain Ken Kosky Naval History Award. And it was really fun.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you for representing the Sioux Falls School District. And about 30 years ago, when I was a student at USD, I was a history student and I was a chaperone at National History Day for the students from South Dakota. And a classmate of mine was Bob Simpson, who I believe might be in Jackson. So a little small tidbit here, but. So National History Day is very special to me just because I get to go twice as chaperone.
Full circle. And we want to mention also Erica Bell, their teacher, is here to support them and, and obviously she had a strong hand in, and I don't mean strong hand. I mean a very guiding hand in their success. And, and to have two groups of Edison Middle School students do so well in this competition is, is worthy of celebrating. We tried to get them here a couple of times over the summer and just, there were a lot of different factors going on, but certainly now that they're freshmen, we want to make sure we honor what they did over the summer months as well.
I just wanted to say it's not, it's not easy to find a topic that's gonna be engaging enough to come up with a big presentation. It's not easy to do all of that research and it certainly isn't easy. Your, your product at the end, your board looked, I mean, we obviously can't see the details, but it looked like it was amazing. And so those are all challenging things and then to go and travel and stand up in front of people and present, and just the way that you guys spoke up here tonight, you are very well spoken. You didn't sound rehearsed, you sounded confident and very interested and engaged in your topic. And so congratulations, I know that that didn't come overnight. That was a lot of hard work and dedication outside of the classes that you were taking because this, I'm assuming, all happened while you were still doing your normal studies and activities and things like that. So congratulations, that dedication and hard work will serve you very well in your high school academic career as well as beyond that. So thank you, as Cynthia said, for representing our, our district and for continuing to do great things.
I'd just like to add that my son, John, as the boys know, he was at, yes, and the teachers know, he was also at this event a couple of years ago. And it really is such a testament to the history teachers in our school district and how they engage and, and focus students on, on the history and how that impacts our decisions going forward. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on. We'll move on to conflicts of interest. We have one presented, Board Member Parker. Do you have a motion to approve the conflict of interest?
Removed. Second.
Have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the conflicts of interest of Board Member Parker signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. One, with, uh, motion passes with one abstention, Board Member Parker. Move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Items eight, A through F. Do I have a motion?
Removed.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in, uh, approval of approving the consent, excuse me, in, voting in favor of approval of consent agenda, items eight, A through F signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Now moving on to the supplemental consent agenda, we'll do nine, A first. Approval of claims to Sanford Healthcare System. Do I have a motion?
Removed.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor of approving claims to Sanford Health System, item nine, A signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries with two abstentions from Board Member Mickelson and Board Member Ryder. Moving on to nine, B, approval of claims to Vera McKinnon Hospital.
Removed. Second.
Have a motion and second on approval of claims to Vera McKinnon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries with one abstention, Board Member Parker. Now to 10 reports of the superintendent, Dr. Meyer.
Thank you. We have three reports tonight. The first report is a staff development update, all those things that our staff did to prepare for the year and, and actually is continuing to do. Here to deliver that report tonight is our Assistant Superintendent in charge of Curriculum Services, amongst other things, is Dr. Teresa Boyson.
Good evening. It has been a busy couple of weeks and we're here tonight to just share some of that information for, with you about what we've done over the summer and leading into the school year. Our strategic plan again drives everything that we do. So district priority area three, district staff and priority areas statement seven. The Sioux Falls School District will support and train staff to encourage innovation and enable them to grow throughout their careers. We're committed to the training of our staff and the staff development for all employees and all employee groups. So over the summer and throughout those last two weeks, we've had staff development opportunities for every single employee group in the Sioux Falls School District. In addition to what we do through the central office, the buildings also have had staff development opportunities for, specific to their buildings, training on emergency management preparedness, culturally responsive practices and other targeted activities related to their school's needs. Tonight I'm gonna highlight a few things that we have, that we started over the summer. So we started, we kicked off and I was very nervous about that summer symposium because it led right up to the end of the school year. And so we started right away in May and we kicked that summer symposium off with topics around collaboration, culturally responsive training. We had social emotional learning at that event, response to intervention, collective efficacy for teachers, page, which is that peer access and group equity and advantage math, which we call ABMR. And so those are some of the trainings that we had right away at the beginning of the summer and led through the summer. And then we moved into some focused trainings for groups of staff. One of our staff that we really focused, some significant training on at the beginning of the summer and through the summer is our new administrators, our interns and our instructional coaches. And they went through sheltered instruction observation protocol, or SIAO, and really looking at specific strategies to help engage students in the classroom. Sped 101. And so they get all the good things that go on with special education and how they work with students and staff. Instructional leadership is our training for our admin and it starts in the summer and it goes throughout the year. And that works on feedback and giving that productive feedback to staff and for growth for them, but also for their students. And then crucial, crucial conversations training. So that's for our admin team. And then we also had focused training for our computer science immersion at our Code to the Future Schools. And that was anybody that's new to those buildings and then what's new and upcoming for this year to keep, get them up to speed for, ready for the year. And then we started with our very first group of staff on August 8th at Memorial with our educational assistants. We had 412 educational assistants and behavior facilitators, specialists there with us on that day. And here are some of the topics that we included. We had Jermaine, Dr. Jermaine Davis, working with, working with an inclusive lens, so culturally responsive practices that kicked off our morning and that really set the tone for the day. And then we've had some adverse childhood experiences, training and that looks at trauma within this, within a child's upbringing and those aces, is what they call them. How many aces do you have in your bucket? And how do we help work with those types of, with students? We had data collection, confidentiality, who are our students? So we had Kristen Smith from our immersion center come out and talk to the group about who is coming into the Sioux Falls School District. And then we did some training specific to elementary around SIPs. So their reading strategy so that those that work with elementary students had that. And so that was a great first look at that. And then we moved into some other support groups. Our clerical had a combination, again, this year, we did last year for the first time. Half of their training is through our learning management system, Schoology, and the other half is face-to-face training. So any training that has to do with ITS out there, they do that face-to-face and the rest through finance, community relations, Bob Gray was Safe and Secure. We can all do that through that LMS system so they can watch those videos and get that information on a schedule that works for them and their building. But then also they can refer back to that information all year long because it's housed within that system. Then we moved into our new hire day on August 12th and we welcomed 146 new staff to Sioux Falls. And these are teachers that some are brand new with zero years' experience and some are coming to us from other professions with an alternative certificate or from another district with years of experience. And so that was a great day. Curriculum services and instructional coaches offered training specific to what they needed on August 12th. And then we moved into more of our back-to-school trainings. The week right, right after we kicked off at the Pentagon, we had early childhood, really looking at high scope and their dialogic reading program, elementary. Listen to the becoming the math teacher you wish you had and really help, helping staff to overcome some of those. If they're afraid to be that math teacher. So really looking at that and it was a good day for them. They had a whole day with Zager Smith. And then we had Dr. House speak to them on Friday, or on Monday morning on American Indian Research and Native American Studies. And working specifically then with fourth grade on that, implementing the, um, Saco, which is we, working with our Native American standards. And then we did SIPs training. Middle school, we did more work with the LMS. Student engagement and standards-based learning. In high school, we had instructional agility and engaging assessments with Tom Shimmer. He spoke to both middle school and high school on the power of a zero and how we can be careful we don't use our gradebook as power. And really working with the middle school and the high school and that was well received. And high school finished off with choose your own adventure professional development. So they had 25 different courses they could choose from throughout the day and really self-direct that professional development opportunity for them. And the rest of our groups, again, it's very specific training for them so that they can do what they do best every day. Our special education nurse, our school psychologist and our speech therapy targeted professional development for them. And so our goal through curriculum services is really to make sure that every teacher has what they need to do the very best that they do every day. But then, so every student receives an excellent education and instruction in their classroom every day. And that's our staff development update for the 2019 school year. I'll stand by for any questions.
I'm curious, I know there's a lot of topics and we have, obviously have a lot of different groups of people too. How, what's the process for, I don't know, I don't wanna say determining effectiveness, but how do we know that the time and energy that we spent now, before school started, when they, when we do drop-in visits, when we do evaluations of teachers and things like that? Are there certain things that we say, we trained this at the beginning of the year? I'm looking for this as part of your instructional practices or how does that work?
So at the end of our, of trainings, one thing, one practice is we take a survey to make sure that, that, that was effective or it hit the mark or what would you like to see different or better? So that's one piece of it. But then also really looking at student engagement, feedback, do we give that? And we have certain markers that they look for on that drop-in visit. And then the principals can run that report to see, am I seeing these things in that classroom to make sure that they're making, they're hitting the target with that.
And then the other thing I would say to that, Carly, good question, is if we, those gaps where maybe we don't see drive what the professional development will look like next year?
Okay. Good question.
When it's being implemented successfully, how is that shared within the district? Is there a way, like, so is that, like, does one building principal, can they say, wow, our teacher, so how is that?
Right, so we always look for bright spots. And so when you see a bright spot, so maybe this building's moving the marker on social emotional or they're moving the marker on reading or math or science, then we ask those deeper questions of them. What are you doing? And then we share that information out at principals' meetings. So that way you can share and then, oh, I can reflect back, am I doing that in my building? And then how can I move that forward?
Kind of in that same vein, do we ever have teachers then who are showing these new skills and they're utilizing them? Do they ever, do we ever use them to go to other buildings or to teach? You know what I mean?
Right, right.
And the show, kind of the train the trainer to say, I went to this training, I learned this and this is how I implemented it. Because maybe as another teacher, I might say, oh, I never even thought about that. You know what I mean?
Maybe more so in the building. I can't say that we've done it across buildings.
Okay.
But in the building for sure. Alright.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We're good? Do you have a motion to approve the staff development report?
Removed.
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, okay. Thank you.
Our second report tonight is the Fall 2019 Staffing Update. Here to deliver that report is our Senior Director of Human Resources, Becky Dillon.
Good evening. The Human Resources Department, this time of year, it takes a collective deep breath, sigh, alright, we did it. And that's certainly not without the hard work of everyone across the district that, that spends their spring and summer hiring. As you can see up on the screen, we have a whole group of new teachers. I don't know if it's because I've been here for 20 years, but to me, they look awfully young. But I think that every year when they, when they come in. So it's been a lot of fun welcoming all the new staff this year. We are welcoming 129 new teachers. As a point of, two points of clarification, in your report, it probably said 125, but no one let me stop hiring when I published the report, so I just updated the PowerPoint instead. And then Dr. Boyson mentioned she had 140 new staff. Her staff were actually, some of them were from another level coming in to get PD in a new area. So that's why those numbers are a little bit different. You can see from the pie chart there that almost half were elementary staff. And we just had a nice mix. That's pretty typical. We didn't see any big swings in the, in the levels there. Forty-three percent of our teachers this year are brand new to the profession. Again, we're always right around that half are brand new to the profession. And then two-thirds have less than five years' experience. And three-quarters are from South Dakota. We also hired folks from Minnesota and Iowa, Arizona, Massachusetts, Colorado, Idaho, Indiana, Nebraska, Oregon, Pennsylvania, Tennessee and Spain. So we had a nice mix of people around. One of the, the fun parts in looking at this data was to see the number of staff that already worked for us last year that are now coming back as teachers. So one-third of them, if you will, had their foot in the door. And they had their foot in the door by being substitute teachers, education assistants, part-time staff. And then three of them came from Dr. Nold's Teacher Internship Program, where we welcomed a Spanish immersion teacher, a special ed teacher and a chemistry teacher. So that was exciting to see that work pay off. Now looking where we've been for the past five years, you can see that we haven't hired as many teachers in the past two years. And looking back at the, the data, we've had a few less retirements, a little less turnover, less programming changes than we had five years ago. Five years ago, we had a number more elementary staff hired and then also special education staff. As you can see here, we hovered just right under five years of experience of the people that we've hired. And then right around a third of them had their master's degree when they come to us. Now teacher hiring is pretty close to being wrapped up. I believe we probably will be adding one more staff at the elementary level. But we, our focus really now is on our support staff. Because it's when all of these kids come to school, we start realizing, okay, we may need some more support staff here and there. So we're in full hiring for support staff. If you look on our website right now, we need 23 education assistants. So, well, we've still got some work to do. We've hired about 105 to date. That would be education assistants, specialists, coaches, that all work with, with our students. And then of course, we need about 250 substitute teachers. We cast a wide net when it comes to recruitment. We like to do a lot of things because we catch people from all walks of life that wanna work in a school. to work in a school district. Our favorites are still the job fairs and the meet and greets where we can get candidates connected with principals because that's where the, that's really where the best stuff happens, when they can be talking with, about teaching and learning together. Something new this year, you might have seen if you're driving up and down 41st Street or even Cliff Avenue, we've got some digital billboards looking for substitute teachers and for custodians, where our focus this fall for those. This time of year, we also, also take a look at what our hiring pool was. We had about 832 teacher applicants. Three-quarters of them are from South Dakota and 87% are from the Midwest. It's not atypical for us. We have a young pool of applicants. Over half of them have less than five years of experience. And then the average years of experience is just under seven years. Now, looking ahead, the past two years, we saw about a 20% dip in teacher applications between 17, 18, and 18, 19. I reasoned that was because we didn't do early hires for elementary or special ed because we'd done a lot of programming changes between those two years and had staff to reassign. But as I noticed again this year, we did do early hires and our numbers are about the same. So we'll have to keep track of that trend and see where that's going. And then one of the last things I want to just point out is when we look around us, these are the people that are in our applicant pool. So 649 of them are right here in South Dakota. But I was really surprised by the number that, the few number that are from Minnesota and Iowa, Nebraska and North Dakota. Now, one thing to keep in mind, if you have a student that resides in Sioux City, Iowa, and they go to USD, I use their current address, so it said South Dakota. So that could be a reason for the, the high number. But when we're looking at the number of people that want to maybe apply to Sioux Falls to move to Sioux Falls, that was a surprising number and something definitely that we want to keep track of and, and see why, why this is. Does anybody have any questions?
Just, we, we need to promote substitute applications.
That's right. If you've got one day a month, we'll take you.
Is that a pretty usual number right now or is this unusual high for the 250 short right now?
That's always our goal, is 250.
Okay.
To replace those that we've hired, those that have moved on to something else. And then when you're hiring people that can work maybe once a week or once a month, you need a large number to fill in the need.
How many subs do we have on average a day in the district? There is such a thing as an average.
Well, the, the low point is right about 130. And then higher point, when we get into maybe tournament time or cold and flu season, we could need close to 300. So there's a swing there, definitely.
And just a reminder for people who are listening or watching, what is the requirement that you have to have to be a substitute?
We prefer individuals with a bachelor's degree. However, if you have an associate's degree and some solid working experience, we are able to bring you onto the subpool.
They just go to the school district website to apply?
Yes.
Just trying to help you. Any other questions?
Well, 830 applicants, just to look through that many and decide where you want to go as far as applicant, or interviews and buildings and things like that is, is a big and time-consuming job. So while you might be sad that it's 200 less than it has been, you might also be happy that it's less, but thank you for the time that and dedication that that takes. You and your team of people who have to go through that and decide, you know, do they have the requirements meet that they need to work here? And where are the openings? And all the people who take the time to make sure that we have the best people in our classrooms, not just teachers, but all of the very important support staff as well. So hopefully, we can continue to recruit from in and outside of South Dakota and new grads and people who maybe need a change of pace and love kids and love teaching. So thank you for your work. You're most welcome. It's my privilege.
No further comments or questions? Do we have a motion to approve the staffing update?
So moved.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. Our third report tonight will be the fiscal year 19 wrap-up report. This report comes to you tonight from our business manager, Todd Veek.
Thanks. Sorry about that. Usually at the second board meeting and, or second regular meeting in August, we have the final finance reports and the final business managers' reports because we've locked that down. And that is kind of a remnant of when our state aid report used to be due August 15th. We had to have all that stuff figured out by, by the time that meeting was held. A few years ago, they moved that deadline back to August 30th and with our change over to a new finance system and kind of a double entry and all that other work that, that had to go on our finance staff, we, we're still finishing up our report tonight. So this is just an oral report. We know where our numbers are going to end up. There's a few details that have to be worked out yet when you're uploading to that state system. So you'll get the business manager report in the, in the authos at the next meeting in September, but we'll go through the usual data we provide at this time. So we look at, we have what we call our tax-supported funds, and we're going to look at the revenues here. Of course, our general fund is our largest, and we actually came in 1.8 million to the good. Most of that was interest income. We did pretty well on interest income this year. Our capital LA fund was about, kind of right on the money. And our special education was just a little bit short as well. So we don't like to be short, but we, we kind of knew that was coming. We overshot our state aid estimate. And, and when we did our final budget in September where we added two, we added federal money to make up for that, but we knew we, you're not allowed, once you've approved the budget in July, you can't reduce the items. You can only add two. So we kind of knew that one was coming as well. Pension fund, that's, that was wiped out in 2016, but we're still getting some late, late property tax payments to that. Bond redemption fund, we had retired that, but now we have the passage of the $190 million bond. We're, we're back at that again in our revenues this year. So we did do that 13 cent levy and our revenues this year were $1,001,73. To look at our expenditures, in the, we hope to come in low always. In the general fund, we came in at 99.2%. So that was a positive about 1.4%, 1.4 million over, over the budget. Usually we get that in salaries coming low. We always kind of budget that delta and hopefully we do better than what we budgeted in the delta and we came in a little bit better as well there. Capital LA, we were 1.8 million to the good versus budget. SPED, we were close to on the money. We spent 98.4% of the budget. And bond redemption, it's just a tiny, the bond redemption gets a little goofy with, you get, you get your revenue twice a year and you got to pay it off according to the schedule. So we, we only spent 92% of what was budgeted this year. So probably the most important thing is kind of look at how we netted, the combination of the revenues and the expenditures. So on the general fund, we had budgeted $1.3 million into the fund balance. We actually came out almost $2 million to the good. So our variance there was a positive $3.3 million. Capital LA, it was 2.1 million. Our tax revenues came in better than we had expected way back in April, 15 months ago. The pension fund, you know, four, 4,000, we're not planning on anything for that. So that's obviously our positive variance. And then bond redemption fund was, we just budgeted what we thought we were going to need to spend. We were levied at 13 cents and we're going to work our way into the full amount of that, that, that bond redemption fund as we go forward. So what does it look like? What do our fund balances look like? General fund balance is now at 14.8 million. The estimate was, that would be at 12.7. So that was, that is good news. Capital LA plan, our, our, we were at 10.4 last year. Our estimate was at 9 million and we're at 8.7. We're within 300,000 where we thought we'd be in March when we prepared that, that plan. SPED, we know we've been spending that down. It's down to 2.4%. However, we do still have some IDA carryover left over from the days of ARA. So if you consider that as part of the fund balance, we're at 5.6. Not, we'd still like to be higher than that, but, but it isn't quite as low as it looks there. Our, our pension fund, that money just gets transferred into the general fund. Can't even spend it out there anymore. And bond redemption, it looks really large. It's 202%, but we have a $3.3 million payment that was made this month on that. So that, that fund will actually be borrowing, some inter-fund borrowing for a little while until we get that back. So that is kind of a quick overview of where we stand with those tax-supported funds. There is one other part that's part of the state aid report that's new since 2016, and that's the teacher compensation. We have to certify what that is. And you know, we, we have a pretty good idea where it's going to be, but our SFEA group involves more than classroom teachers, it involves counselors, social workers. So you don't know exactly what that's going to look like when you figure it out on, on the teachers or just who are considered classroom teachers. So our average increase was 0.9%. It seems underwhelming, but we get that delta. We know that delta exists. We had budgeted for 2.75 and with the delta, it went down to 0.9. We're, we are easily meeting the requirements. The requirements are that you're above 2017 levels. We're far above that. But what's maybe more interesting is that average total compensation, that's 2.6%. And that's health insurance and is the big driver of that. So, and that's what they, they figured on. You got to have your average compensation growing. So 2.6%, again, not a huge number, but remember our state aid last year, including the one-time money, was 1.7%. So if you look at, we have $111 million of total compensation. And if you just estimate that 11 million of that's federal, just to make a nice round number for, so I can do it. If you think of the difference between 2.6 and 1.7 is .9, that's $900,000. That's $900,000 we have to make up somewhere in our budget for the compensation of the classroom teachers in this school district. So that's kind of, you know, that state, we always said that state aid is going to have drive, what we can afford to pay people. And we beat that by a pretty good margin last year. So of course, we don't have the businessman, the final business manager and the final finance report for you tonight, so there's no formal action to take tonight. This is just informational. That'll be in the authos next time because you heard what I would say two weeks from now, you heard it tonight. So I'd stand by for any questions.
Not a question, but just an observation. Given that you're working with tax-supported funds, I just want to congratulate you on the projections that you have to do and where you landed with those, given that it's not an exact science. And then second, to the extent that we can continue to prioritize teacher compensation, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, a lot of people provide a lot of information. That allows us to do a pretty good job of projecting where we're going to be. And yeah, we've tried to make it, tried to make it a priority to keep the salaries moving forward instead of just locking them into the state aid and knowing the delta will actually move on backwards.
Any other questions or comments? Sing them, do I?
Yeah, we don't need an action tonight.
Well, you don't, not even the approval of your.
No, we don't.
Okay. Acknowledgement? Okay. Okay, we'll move on. Do we have a motion to move into executive session under SDCL 1-25-2, friends, one?
Two.
Second.
Mm-hmm.[1742.28]